All right. Well, good evening, everyone. So wanted to officially welcome you all to the informational session and public hearing for an air permit that is being requested by Marathon. Marathon Petroleum Company. I have to get my words in gear today. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I'm going to be hosting the meeting tonight. So we're doing some things a little bit differently. So have patience with us tonight. One of the things that we are going to be doing is we're broadcasting this online meeting. So got all my panelists online with me, but then we also have a handful of Eagle staff over at the company center in Detroit right now. So that if we had folks that wanted to come and listen in to the live broadcast, make, ask questions or make comments from there. Hopefully we can hopefully we can facilitate the ability to do that. We've been testing it for a little bit here and it seems to be working. So fingers crossed, everything goes great there. I know we have some folks already in the audience over there at Kemi. So we greatly appreciate you coming out to listen in. Before we get started into kind of the logistics and the nitty gritty of how the meeting's going to go tonight, I do want to pass it over to our Eagle Air Quality Division Director, Mary Ann Dolehanti. So Mary Ann is the decision maker for this permit action. And I know she just wants to say hello to everybody and welcome everybody to the meeting. So Mary Ann, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Jen. And I just wanted to take a minute before we get started to thank everyone for coming, for spending your time with us tonight to attend the public hearing. I really hope tonight affords you a time to ask questions about this project as proposed by Marathon. And I know that we have a great group of folks pulled together to answer your questions. We're going to provide some insight into the process that took us to get to this point. For some of you who participate in a lot of our hearings, this may be repeat, but it's, you know, we find that it's important to kind of go through the, the process of how we review permits and get it to the point where we are tonight. We'll talk about what the company is asking to do in their application. And then we're going to have a question to answer before we open it up for the hearing. And I just want to say, as Jen mentioned too, you know, but from my perspective, a special welcome to those of us or those of you joining us from Kemi. This hybrid hearing approach is very new and we're just fortunate that we were able to partner with Kemi to set up a local space for viewing. So again, taking time tonight, I know it takes you away from doing other things, although it is a little humid, but it's a beautiful night out. So really appreciate you being here with us. We really value public participation and we really value your input. So whether you're here to listen or you're planning to make a comment, thank you for being here. The comments you provide to us on projects like this are very helpful to us so that we can ensure every aspect, you know, of what a company is requesting is thoughtfully and thoroughly reviewed by our team. So your comments will be taken into consideration as we make, as I make a decision on this proposed permit. And then we'll be communicating with all of you regarding the decision once it's made. So again, thanks for being here. And at this point, I'm going to pass it back to Jen so she can move us through the rest of the evening.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mary Ann. You brought up a lot of really good points. So I appreciate that. And I, I'm pretty excited actually that we're doing this hybrid kind of thing. I know I'm going to introduce my staff that's over there at Kemi in just a minute too. But I want to go through just a few of the kind of housekeeping things, just so everybody is on the same page. So we're going to have all of your lines muted and that's going to be extra important tonight because I know when we were trying out some of the audio visual equipment over there at Kemi, we were getting a little bit of feedback. So we're going to keep you guys muted unless you have questions or comments that you're asking verbally and we are recording this. So as with all of our public hearings, we do record them, we get them transcribed and we put them on YouTube for people who maybe had to duck out early or missed the meeting and wanted to review that. Tonight, the way we're going to be doing this is we're going to have you guys be able to type your questions if you're watching online into your question and answer box at the bottom of the screen. I'll show you that in just a minute. So during the informational session, we'll be responding to those questions. We've got staff here, which I'm going to introduce to you in just a couple of minutes. That have a lot of areas of expertise and have worked on this proposed permit. So they'll hopefully be able to provide you some insight. And then when we get to the second portion of the night, the public hearing, that'll just be Mary Ann and I listening into your comments. Everybody's going to be listening, but it's not a give and take. So I just want to be very clear about the hearing portion is not a give and take. That's why we do the question and answer because we feel it's really important to get your questions answered before we kind of get into that more official version of the evening. So like I said, if you're watching online, or even if you're at Kemi and you're able to get on your phone and you feel more comfortable typing in a question, feel free to do that. You can also use the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen if you're watching online. And I don't see that I have, I have one phone call listener. So if you're listening in on your phone and you want to ask a question verbally, you can type pound two into your phone and that will raise your hand. Once we get to that question and answer portion, and I should be able to unmute you. And then for those of you at Kemi, if you guys want to even just jot down your questions, you know, as you're listening to the presentation, that's great. We are going to go to Kemi for anybody who wants, not literally go, but we're going to unmute the Kemi Center. So you can come up to the microphone and ask questions during the Q and A session as well. So just kind of wanted to let everybody know that that's going to be available to all. So hopefully we'll be able to facilitate a lot of different ways that we can do that. So I would do want to ask my staff to turn your cameras on. And while you guys are doing that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the staff that we have over there at Kemi. So my boss, actually Jim Osterowski is over there doing all the AV type of stuff. So he's the, the guy with the mask sitting behind the curtain, kind of like in the Wizard of Oz over there. But then we also have a bunch of air quality staff over there that are just, you know, hopefully answer questions, not necessarily about the marathon project because they're not really ones that worked on the project. But if you have other questions about air quality related things, or you just want some, you know, general air quality related questions answered, they, they should be a great help. So we have April Wendling, who is our Detroit Division, I'm sorry, Detroit District Supervisor, Jeff Corneski, he is the Assistant District Supervisor over there in Detroit. And then I have three permit engineers over there. Hopefully, if you guys are there, you're kind of raising your hand and waving to folks. But I have Chuku OJ, Jacob Young, and then Andrew Bennett are over there as well. So if you have questions for those guys, they have some handouts for people, some things that we had distributed online previously. So like I said, if you have any questions, maybe, you know, not necessarily related to the permit action, but other things, please feel free to seek them out. They're happy to help. And if they don't have the answers, they're more than happy to find out the answer for you. So the first person, you already met Mary Ann. So I know she has turned her camera on. You'll see her again. Once we get to the comment session. I have Matt Tomlinson. He actually works with me too. He's going to be helping me with some of the background stuff with Zoom and in the meeting and things like that. So you won't necessarily see him. But who you will see and hear a lot from is Andy Drury. So he's the permit engineer on this proposed project. So he's going to be doing a lot of the talking during the informational session, talking to you about the review of the permit and how the conditions were come, came up with and things like that, kind of laying the groundwork for you on how the division works. And then I have Keisha Williams. She's our toxicologist. So toxicologists do a lot of work with health based screening levels. So if you have questions about some of those health based screening levels, she'll be available for that during the question and answer. Got Susan Kilmer and she's in our air, she's the, actually the supervisor now, I have to get this right, of our air monitoring section. So her and her staff work with the stationary air monitors that are out in community that measure things in the outside air. So we have a lot of air monitoring stations around the area around marathons. We can talk about those later. Folks are interested. I've got George Acevedo. He is our inspector for the marathon facility. So if you're familiar with marathon at all, you've probably talked to George in the past or you've at least heard of him. So he's a great guy too. And he's going to be talking a little bit about kind of what we do from inspection standpoint. And then I have Alex Kanaki also, and he is with our modeling. So that's a little bit different than what Susan does. Modeling is actually taking a computer program that looks at what the company is asking for and uses that computer program to see if those emissions that they're requesting are going to meet the air quality standards and make sure that all of that stuff is going to be in compliance. So I know that was a lot of people. I don't expect everybody to remember everybody's names, but just make sure that you know that we're here to answer your questions and we're obviously happy to help. So now that you know who's all here, we're going to start off with the informational session in just a minute. So if my staff wants to turn their cameras off here, that's totally fine. Andy, you might want to leave yours on. But Andy's going to be talking to, giving you a very short presentation, probably shorter than what I've been saying. Actually, on the proposed project, then we're going to get right into that question and answer when we can be talking back and forth to you. What we're going to try to do, and because we've got a little bit different setup right now, I'm going to shoot for seven o'clock, starting the public hearing. But if we go a little bit after seven, because you guys have questions, that's also totally fine for tonight. And we're going to talk after the hearing portion about how you can still submit comments because the comment period is still going to be open for quite a bit yet. And so that I don't fit to you, I wanted to let you, I want to double check that, that August 11th. So you still have quite a bit of time to submit comments. If you're not ready to submit comments tonight, if you have additional comments, there's plenty of other ways to do that. Talk to you really quick about where you can find other information and then we will let you know how you can contact us if you have further questions. So without further ado, Andy, I'm going to pass it over to you. So if you want to go ahead and share your screen and then you can take it away with your informational session. That looks great. So just make sure you're unmuting yourself. We can hear you and then you should be good to go. Do you want to share that screen again, Andy?
Yeah, it wouldn't let me unmute.
Okay. I know that happens sometimes. Zoom's not a perfect system, right?
There we go. How's that?
That looks good.
All right. Now I gotta get you out of the way because you're in my, uh, there we go, covering up my notes.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So thank you. Like Jen mentioned, my name is Andy Drury. I am the lead permit engineer who worked with a team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the Marathon Petroleum Company LP air permit application. Before we get into the details of the project, I would like to briefly talk about what the air quality vision does and how the permitting process works. We all know that pollution comes from many different things such as big farms, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the air quality division is to protect public health and the environment. And we provide this protection by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. AQD staff do many different things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at different toxics to make sure public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as the petroleum refinery where we're talking about tonight. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with the rules and regulations in place to protect public health. So the air quality division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I do want to point out a few items that the permit does not cover and that the AQD does not have the ability to regulate. You'll want to talk to your local government if you have questions or concerns about issues such as zoning, noise and traffic. Additionally, the AQD does not determine whether a facility is needed when reviewing an air permit application. We evaluate a project to ensure that it meets the applicable air quality rules and regulations. I'd like to give a simple overview of the steps the company and the AQD go through to get a proposed draft permit ready for comment. First, a company like Marathon decides they would like to install, modify or construct a piece of equipment such as the proposed changes to the sulfur recovery unit throughput limits. The company submits a permit application to the AQD. The application goes through a review during which the engineer evaluates the information the company submitted as it relates to the state and federal air quality regulations. If the project appears to meet the rules and regulations, the engineer creates a proposed draft permit. Once a proposed draft permit is reviewed by the AQD inspector, is sent to the company for review. And in certain cases, such as this one, the proposed permit is posted for public comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process and anyone can comment on the proposed permit, including the company. Once the comment period ends, all comments received are evaluated and can potentially impact the permitting decision. Finally, a decision is made on the permit. This decision may be to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes, or to deny the permit. The decision is based on the ability of the company's proposal to meet air regulations. We cannot base our decision on the need for or popularity of a proposal. Marathon is proposing to change the sulfur production limits for the sulfur recovery units at the Detroit refinery. There are two sulfur recovery units called the East Plant SRU, which is the green dot on the diagram, and the North Plant SRU, which is the orange dot. Before getting into the details of Marathon's request, I want to give a very simplified description of what a sulfur recovery unit does. The Detroit refinery processes crude oil that contains sulfur. In order to meet federal requirements like the tier three fuel standard, Marathon has to remove most of the sulfur from the oil as they process it. Marathon does this by reacting a sulfur with hydrogen in hydro treaters, which forms hydrogen sulfide. The low sulfur material goes on for processing and the hydrogen sulfide goes to the sulfur recovery units where it's converted to elemental sulfur. The conversion process is not 100%. So there are emissions of hydrogen sulfide from the sulfur recovery units. Each sulfur recovery unit has a thermal oxidizer to control these emissions and the thermal oxidizers burn natural gas. The thermal oxidizers release the following to the ambient air. Pollutants from combustion of natural gas, sulfur dioxide and sulfuric acid mist from burning the hydrogen sulfide and leftover hydrogen sulfide. Marathon is requesting to change the sulfur production limits for the sulfur recovery units at the Detroit refinery. The current limits are 130 long tons per day for the east plant and 260 long tons per day for the north plant. Marathon is not requesting to change the east plant sulfur production limit. Marathon is requesting to remove the north plant sulfur production limit and replace it with a limit that covers both sulfur, sulfur recovery units combined. The proposed limit is the sum of the current limits, 130 long tons plus 260 long tons, which is 390 long tons per day. So now I'm going to talk about the review of the application. While reviewing a proposed project, the AQD looks at several things. We review the level of emissions to find out how the project and the facility should be classified. Based on the level of emissions and the type of equipment, we determine what type of review is needed, including which rules and regulations the proposed project is subject to. One part of figuring, figuring out the applicable rules is the location of the facility. This map shows the current attainment status from state of Michigan. An area is considered to be in attainment or to be non attainment if there are concentrations of certain pollutants are above the national standards. Michigan currently has non attainment areas for two pollutants, ozone and sulfur dioxide or SO2. Marathon's refinery is located in an area that is considered non attainment for ozone, which is regulated through two other pollutants, volatile organic compounds or VOCs and oxides of nitrogen referred to as NOx. The area is also considered non attainment for sulfur dioxide. If the overall increase in emissions from a project for these pollutants is high enough, then those pollutants need to go through what is called a non attainment permit review. If the increase in overall emissions for certain other pollutants is high enough, then those pollutants need to go through a prevention of significant deterioration or PSD permit review. There are nine SO2 monitors in the area near Marathon. Eagle operates five of these monitors, which are shown in blue and Marathon operates the other four, which are shown in orange. And applicability analysis is used to see if any pollutants are subject to either non attainment or PSD review. Marathon's application addresses these pollutants through an actual to projected actual applicability analysis. An actual to projected actual analysis compares the future emissions from the equipment after the project to the past emissions for the equipment. For this application, the equipment is the two sulfur recovery units. If the increase for any single pollutant is more than a certain threshold, that permit must go through a more stringent review, either non attainment or PSD. The analysis for this project shows the change in emissions for all individual pollutants is less than its specified threshold. Therefore, no pollutant is required to go through a non attainment or PSD permit review. This table lists a few of the pollutants submitted from the sulfur recovery units and the possible emission changes. The technical fact sheet has more information about emissions from the project. According to Marathon's application, they expected the emissions to go down because the north plant is more efficient than the east plant because the north plant is a newer design. Shifting sulfur production to the north plant should result in lower emissions. Although the proposed project is not subject to the non attainment or PSD review requirements, it must still comply with all other applicable rules and regulations. Throughout the review process and during development of the proposed draft permit, the AQD has ensured the applicable state and federal rules have been met. One example of this is a computer simulation referred to as modeling and modeling was done for SO2 particulate matter less than 10 microns called PM10 and particulate matter less than 2.5 microns called PM2.5 to show that no violation of the national standard is expected. While the area is non attainment for SO2, the modeling shows the SO2 concentration will not go up. The AQD also reviewed the toxic air contaminants or TAC emissions from the north plant and compared those emissions to the state of Michigan health based screening levels. These screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. Marathon's proposed emissions will not violate the health based screening levels. Some of the pollutants we reviewed are hydrogen sulfide and sulfuric acid. The sulfur recovery units are subject to US EPA's new source performance standard for petroleum refineries referred to as NSP SJA. The sulfur recovery units are expected to continue to comply with the standard. The sulfur recovery units are also subject to US EPA's national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants for sulfur recovery units at petroleum refineries referred to as NESHAP UUU. The SRUs are expected to continue to comply with the standard. Based on AQD's review and evaluation of the application, we developed a proposed permit to ensure the project complies with the regulations. The proposed draft permit is based on the existing permit conditions for the sulfur recovery units. The primary change to the conditions is removing the sulfur production limit from the north plant and adding a sulfur production limit that covers both the east plant and the north plant together. The proposed draft permit contains emission limits for the pollutants listed here and also has requirements for operating the thermal oxidizers, or emission testing, or continuous SO2 monitoring, or monitoring various process parameters and record keeping of important data that would be used to show the project meets the emission limits and sulfur production limits. If the permit is approved, the emission limits and sulfur production limits, along with the thermal oxidizers, testing, monitoring and record keeping requirements would ensure the sulfur recovery units comply with the state rules and regulations and the federal rules as well. There will be a panel of AQD staff that can answer questions you may have about the proposed project. But first, George Acevedo works in the AQD Detroit District Office. Would like to, like to talk a little bit about the inspection processes, process for facilities like Marathon.
Hey Andy, before you move on, can you go back please to slide 17? We had a request to show the reductions again. If you don't mind. You want to just keep that up there a little bit more? And I don't know if you want to, I know you have notes on this slide too, a little bit. You're talking about the different applicability analyses and why they were not subject to that extra review. Could you just go over that kind of briefly again, if you don't mind, before we move on to George?
Yep, there are levels called significant emission rates for various pollutants. And if a project is going to have an emission increase that is at that significant emission rate or more, then it would be subject to the non attainment or PSD review. For NOx, sulfur dioxide and VOC, that significant emission rate is 40 tons per year. For PM10, it is 15 tons per year and for PM2.5, it is 10 tons per year. And as the slide shows, the project anticipates a reduction in emissions. And so none of these pollutants would be subject to that PSD or an entertainment review.
Which doesn't mean they weren't reviewed. It's just a different kind of review. So just
Yeah, that's correct. We modeled the SO2 and the PM10 and PM2.5. Even though the regulations don't require it specifically, we modeled that because we know those are important pollutants in the area.
So do you know overall, all the different pollutants that are going to be, that are in that proposed permit, they're all looking at reductions. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we're understanding that correctly. Cause we're going to a couple of other questions and before
I, I would have to look at the fact sheet to be sure.
I thought we were too, but I didn't want to speak for you. So I don't know if you want to look at that. If you want to go back to Georgia's slide, I think we can move on for now. And we can always come back to revisit this a minute if we need to.
Yep. And once I'm done sharing my screen, I can go and pull up some more information.
Perfect. Thank you.
There we go.
Okay. So as Andy was talking about, once they go through, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep. So as Andy was discussing, and once the permit goes through the analysis and goes through the public comment period and, and the response to comment, the permits issued or other changes made to it. So once it's a permit issued, it just doesn't go into a vacuum. It's then the role of the inspector to determine the facility's compliance with its permits or permits in, you know. So the bigger the facility, the more frequently the, the facility is inspected in regards to permits, state regulations, federal regulations, but these are not the only opportunities for the state to determine compliance. So other, other opportunities include observing stack tests, observing audits of their continuous emission monitoring, reviewing of periodic reports that the facility submits and also responding to complaints that we get. So you know, the inspection is, is just one part of the compliance universe for this facility. There's, you know, there's, there's other opportunities that come into play frequently to, to have those opportunities to determine compliance.
Yeah, thank you for that, George. I mean, I do think that that's a really good point to show that and to talk about that. You're not just going out, you know, every year or whatever. It's, there's definitely a lot of other things that come into making a full compliance determination for facilities, especially big ones like Marathon. So thank you for that. Andy, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen over yours if that's okay. And then we can kind of move into that question and answer session. That sounds good. All right. Just wanted to remind folks how to ask the questions. And if my panelists want to go ahead and turn their cameras on, that would be great. I'm going to just reintroduce you all in just a second here. But you can go ahead. If you are watching online and type your question into that question and answer box, but or if you feel, you know, passionately about asking your question aloud, we're happy to let you do that as well. You're just going to want to use that raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I know I did have at least one person calling in. So if you're calling in and you would like to voice your question, and this will go the same when we get to the comment section, just click that pound two on your phone. And then for those of you at the company center, if you want to, if anybody has a question that they want to ask, I know Jim is ready to have folks come up to the microphone and be able to voice those questions. So Jim, I'm going to go ahead and ask Matt, if you don't mind, Matt, could you please pull the company center back over to the other side there? So we can interact with them a little bit easier during the question and answer session. And Jim, if you want to just let us know if folks there have any questions, that would be great. All right. So I'm going to go ahead while you all are thinking of questions to ask. I'm going to go ahead and just reintroduce our panel. You just heard from Andy Drury. Remember that he is the permit engineer for this project. And George Acevedo, who is our district inspector. So he's out at the facility quite often. And then I had Alec Kanaki and he is the air modeler. So remember that is the person who kind of took the computer model, looked at those proposed emissions and made that determination and talked with Andy about whether or not those proposed emissions were going to be meeting air quality standards. Keisha Williams is our toxicologist. So she works with all of our air quality staff and within her toxicology unit on developing health based screening levels. So she can definitely answer questions about that. And then Susan Kilmer is in our air monitoring. So if you remember the map that Andy showed that had the nine different air monitors on it, that's what Susan's group does is they help facilitate those, not the ones that Marathon owns and runs, but we do look at that data. And if anyone has questions about that, I know that Susan would be more than happy to try to answer those as well. So I see that I have Mr. Schmidt, you have your hand up. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you so that you can ask your question. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you so that you can ask your question, and I can hear you, so you should be good to go.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to ask questions. I have a question for Jorge Acevedo about when, when an inspector goes out to look at these, what, what are, what is, you know, she able to see? Because from, you know, what I've seen in the past is a lot of this is, is measurements and, when you're, you're at a unit, how can you tell if it's functioning or not functioning? Or, or what is the purpose of, of visiting the facility?
Yeah, that's a really great question, George. I think it would be really good information if you can kind of talk about, if you're going to do a physical inspection over there, what kind of is your process? And what do you look at when you're over there? Thank you so much, Mr. Schmidt, for your, for your question, appreciate it.
Yeah, so that, that is a really good question. So as this permit development process comes into play, there's the modeling that takes, that sort of predicts what the emissions are going to be. And so then the permanent engineer sort of analyzes that with respect to the existing state and federal regulations. And so we look at those numbers and, you know, at the, at the end of that process, we have basically emission limits that the company has held to that, you know, if they, if they meet those emission limits, they will be in compliance with the, with the, with the state and federal standards. So from an inspector's standpoint, when we're looking at a permit, we're looking at, you know, the company usually has to keep records to make sure that they're, you know, not processing more than what they're permitted. You have to look at their emission calculations to make sure that they're keeping track of their emissions and comparing that to what's listed in the permit. Because the permit is essentially a legal contract between the state and the company. So if they are held to whatever, 50 tons of SO2, then the inspector will go in and look at their records to make sure that those are in compliance with those limits. And for this specific facility, the, the facility has what are called continuous emission monitoring. And so what they are doing is they're recording the emissions. And at the end of the month, you have, or I mean, even they're basically recording a, a level every, every minute. And so you, you have a good feeling of what those emissions are going to be, and you take a look at that. And on top of that, we audit, audit the, the monitors to make sure that they're working properly. So every couple of years, we go into the facility, a contractor comes in, does an audit, and compares that to what the facility is using. And then just from a basic standpoint, you're looking at from a stack, is it producing black smoke, is it producing white smoke? Is there significant damage to the stack? Is there, you know, you're looking at their process rates? So you, you, you do look a lot, a lot of information, and this is just for one unit. So there's multiple emission units at the facility. So you try to keep tabs of everything. But like I said, the inspection isn't the end of the compliance period. You have other opportunities to, to make sure that the facility is in compliance with their permits and the state and federal regulations. I hope, I hope that answers your question. And you know, if you want to speak off, off camera or later in, in the week, I'm always available, and I think Jen will have our contact information at the end. So you can definitely, we can have further discussions. But that's essentially what goes into the inspection process.
Yeah, thanks for that, George, I appreciate it. And I, I think what I heard Mr. Horse saying, or Mr. Schmidt saying was, like, when I think about doing an inspection, the physical part of it is, you know, I understand the, the paper part and doing all of that. Like, that's a lot of checks and balances, that's checking math, that's doing all of that stuff. But physically, when you're going and walking around the facility, I think you hit the nail on the head, is that you're looking at the equipment, you're checking for maintenance, you're checking for unusual emissions, you're looking at gauges to make sure that they're working properly. You're, you're checking for things that might be leaking, or you're walking through the process from start to finish and saying like, is this all working like it's supposed to? You're talking to folks at the facility, asking them, probing questions to make sure that everything that they're supposed to be maintaining is being maintained. So you know, it is an interesting thing when we talk about air quality because we don't often see something coming out of a stack. We shouldn't see things coming out of a stack usually. And so that's a great question of, well, how do you know if things are going right or not? So I think you definitely hit the nail on the head there as far as like all the things that go into doing that inspection. And for a facility as large as Marathon, it's not a, you know, a couple hour project. It's, you know, a couple few days, that, you know, when you're adding all of those hours together that you're doing it. So, and I know George writes really good inspection reports too. So if you're very interested, that's definitely some interesting reading to kind of show, you know, what is he looking at to show compliance with the different permit conditions for the ones that are existing at Marathon already? So, all right, I just want to make sure that I give everybody plenty of time to ask any questions that they might have. So let me just check to see if we've got any other hands raised or. Jim, let me know if over there at company, if you've got any folks that have any questions they want to ask. Give you guys plenty of time, so I don't want to move into the comment period too early. Miss Landrum, all right, awesome. Let me just unmute you so you can ask your question. All right, you should be good to go there. Let me see if you can, yep, I think we're hearing you.
What products do the North Plant make?
Oh, that's okay, Jim. We can, Teresa, if you don't mind waiting just a minute, we can go to company and, and ask that question, if you don't mind, that's fine.
What products are made at the North Plant?
George, can you speak to that more thoroughly? I know we're talking about what's in the permit, but is there other things at the North Plant that are worth mentioning?
Yeah, so I mean, from the standpoint that, so the North Plant, you know, has the, the newer sulfur recovery unit. And so, you know, as Andy alluded to, you know, there's several fuel standards that specify the amount of sulfur and fuel. So the sulfur recovery unit and the, and the Klaus unit, they remove sulfur, and what you have as a product is, you know, elementals, elemental sulfur, and then the remaining H2, the hydrogen sulfide, then it gets burned in the thermal oxidizer, which has the continuous emission monitors.
What products are made at the North Plant? What products do you make at the North Plant? What do you make, diesel fuel, ethyl, what type of gasoline? Premium?
Do you know the answer to that one, George?
I mean, they, they make, yeah, they make, at the, at the facility, they all work together to make gasoline, diesel. From this particular process, it's, you know, they have a byproduct, which is elemental sulfur. But yeah, it's just the, the typical fuels, gasoline, diesel, different grades of, of gasoline and diesel.
Well, why is it necessary to increase the capacity on SO2 limit?
Well, no, there, so basically, there's two plants, this sulfuric, the East Plant and the North Plant. And they each have, if you can go back to that slide, Jen, with the caps.
Why do you find it, why do you find it necessary to increase the limits on a North Plant?
So hold on for just a second, if you don't mind, sir. I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding as far as how that goes. I think that what they're trying to do is, let me show, do you want to show the one that Andy was showing about with the reductions? Is that the one that you're talking about, George? Or which one, which slide are you talking about?
There's a cap that talks about the 260.
Oh, yeah.
And the 130.
So there's- Slide 12.
Okay, slide 12. Andy, it might be easier for you to pull that up actually than me. So I don't have the whole presentation right here, but I can get it in just a second, if you guys want to wait for a second.
Nope, I can.
And Andy, well, if you want, if you don't mind talking about that, I think that what the gentleman is getting at is, you know, why are they making this move to change from things from the South Plant to the North Plant? Or not necessarily why, but how is that going to work out? And, and because overall, we're going to be seeing a reduction in the emissions if this is approved.
I wanted to know why is it necessary to make this change?
Well, the change, yeah, the change isn't necessary. But Marathon wants to make this change because it reduces emissions from the plant. When they built the North Plant SRU, they expected it to have a, a certain capacity of sulfur production, and that's what the permit was based on. Since they've been running that plant, they've discovered it can actually produce more sulfur. And so they want to increase the limit at the North Plant so they can take sulfur from the East Plant or, or H2S from the East Plant and run it in the North Plant instead. And when they do that, they get the same amount of sulfur with lower emissions. Because they're not increasing the total amount of sulfur that they can produce. They want to shift from the East Plant, which is older and produces more emissions, to the North Plant that is newer and has lower emissions. So overall, they'll make the same amount of sulfur, but they want to do it in the more efficient unit.
And the other gases, would they be increased or decreased?
For-
That are released, would they be increased, would the total amount be increased or decreased, the other gases, when they make?
Yeah, we expect everything would go down because it's more efficient. The burner's more efficient, so you have lower emissions from burning natural gas. You have less SO2, you've got less particulate, which is produced when you burn the gas and the H2S. There's less H2S because the process, the process produces less H2S while it makes the, the sulfur. It's just a, it's a newer plant with a better design.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get some understanding as to what, what the composition of the air changed? How would the total composition, not just the sulfur?
Right.
The other gases that are being emitted? How would the composition of the gas change there?
So that was the slide that we were showing a little bit earlier, that was showing those negative numbers. So Andy, if you can go to that. So overall, with this permit application, Marathon is requesting to reduce emissions. So that's really important, that makes it a, a little bit. There you go, there's that slide right there. So if you can look at this in that middle column, and I know it's a little bit hard to see there at company, but where it says the possible emission change.
The composition of gases won't change?
It's going to be the same kind of gases, but it's going to be less of those than it was before. So that's what they're asking for is a reduction in these.
Saying that they're going to be what, on the same type of gas, right?
Yeah, it would be the same type. There wouldn't be like a change in the makeup of it. It would have the same kind of like particular molecules or typical, you know, particular emissions in there, but not the same amounts.
It'd be a lesser amount?
Yes.
Of all, all the toxic gases?
That's what we're looking at on the slide here.
All the toxic gas, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little bit behind.
No, you're totally fine, no worries.
I'm a little bit impaired. What I'm trying to get across is, if, if there's not going to be any change, why is the change necessary?
They have to get a permit because the permit, let me go back here. Because currently, they are only allowed to prod, to produce 260 long tons of sulfur at the North Plant.
I understand that.
Yep, and that's a limit in their permit. So in order to be able to put more sulfur through that North Plant and have lower emissions, they have to change the permit limit. And that's why they had to apply for a permit, because they can't just put more through there and go over the limit, because then that's a violation.
You will be increasing the amount of sulfur you put in air.
I, I didn't catch the last part.
I'm sorry, you will be increasing the total amount of sulfur that you're putting in air. It's just to be-
That's, it's, it's increasing the total amount that goes through the plant. So not necessarily that goes out the stack, but that goes through the plant. So overall, with their two units, the, the, the total amount will be less. Does that make sense? Is that, I think maybe we're not-
So, so, so the sum of the limits is 130 plus the 260, which is 390. The 390 is not going to change. The, the only thing that's changing is the 260 that is limited for the North Plant. So maybe they go 300, but then now the East Plant can only go 90. So that 390 limit isn't changing, is, which is the sum of the two limits for the two plants. That's not changing, it's just pushing more through the, the newer plant.
I understand that part now. Why did Eagle find it necessary to put the limits at the 260 bar, on the 260?
That was what was originally requested with the, with the original permit.
When they put the limits at 260 on a North Plant?
Can you say that one more time, please?
What were they trying to achieve when they put the limits to 260 tons on the North Plant?
I think that's something that we might have to look in, what the previous permit, why they asked for that specific number. But that was a number that was asked for by the facility.
Eagle don't arbitrarily throw out one number.
No, nope, we don't do that.
Well, now, 260 was put in there for a reason.
Yep.
Find that reason out?
Yeah, we sure can, we can get back to you if you want. If you want to give Jim your name and number or way to contact you, we can definitely do that. All right, perfect. If you don't mind, you've had some really great questions. I do have somebody that's listening online. If you don't mind, I'm going to go and ask them a question, and then if you have more, we can come back. Does that sound okay?
No, I, 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 you can get me on the email. Just, I just want to find out what was Eagle's reasoning for putting the limit at 260 in the first place? And why was it necessary to change? And I don't, how you going to change, how you're not going to change the composition of the air when you're doing more, when you're adding more toxic to the air? I don't understand that part.
Yep, we can definitely have a conversation about it, because I think, yep, that's the, you know, part of this permit application is actually to reduce those emissions. And because that North Plant is just better at processing that stuff, less emissions come out, even though the same amount or more might go in. So Teresa, I'm going to unmute you, you should be able to talk. There you go, now it worked. So go ahead, let's hear, see if we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'm having technical difficulties, difficulties over here, it's been going on all day. So my question is, on slide 17, with the nitric oxide, the sulfur dioxide, the VOCs, PM10 and 2.5, what is the overall tonnage or poundage reduction of emissions that will come from the North Plant?
All right, Andy's moving to that right now. Can we do some quick math?
Well, I can also, let me, I don't know which screen this will show up on. Because the, the fact sheet also lists out some other pollutants. Yeah, get my calculator, I can just add those numbers up.
And when you say other pollutants, why weren't the other pollutants included?
Oh, they're included in the review, we just didn't put them on the slide because then it gets pretty busy. There's-
I think we would appreciate to see what other pollutants would be reduced.
So can you see?
Okay, I see what you, yes, I can. And I, yep, I see.
That's a lot of busyness, Teresa, that's why. So we were trying to kind of say like, okay, what would people maybe be most interested? Obviously, all of this information is available and the other ones-
Does that say sulfuric acid?
Yes, it does, the third from the bottom.
Okay, I see it, I see it. Okay, so yeah, so what's the overall tonnage or poundage reduction that this transfer will do? Because when I talked to the Marathon rep, he said that because the units are newer, they have better pollution control, and they were reducing the sulfur, sulfur recovery on the older unit. Therefore, it would be a reduction. So I want to know the overall tonnage, poundage reduction this will, that will occur due to this transfer.
Yeah, when I add the numbers up on this table, and this is page three in the fact sheet, I get 61.09 tons. And this would be the reduction if they move the maximum amount of sulfur production to the North Plant. They may or may not be able to do that all the time.
And is that long tons per day?
Well, no, this is tons per year of emissions here.
61 point what now?
09.
09. So can I ask a question? Can you do the long tons per, pounds, which is a long ton equals 2,240 pounds? Can you do that times 365? Because that's how many days in a year they operate, right?
They're allowed to operate that much, they don't because they have occasional shutdowns. I don't know, I don't think they shut down every year. So you want the total?
Yeah, it should equal to 818,000 something, if you're looking at 300- Yeah, it should equal to 818,000 something, if you're looking at 365-day operation. Am I correct?
Oops, if I can put numbers in my calculator correctly. All right, let's try this again. So if you want pounds of sulfur per year?
Yeah, reduction, because it says long tons per day. A long ton is 200, I mean, 2,240 pounds. That's what one equals, right?
Right. And over 365 days, that is 817,990 pounds of sulfur that they are allowed to produce.
Okay.
Per year.
With the 61.09, because that's a ton, should we divide that by? Or should we multiply to see how much of a reduction it would be in tonnage? Since we did it in pounds, what will we multiply the 61.09 to, to get the total reduction in, in pounds or tonnage?
In pounds would be, multiply that by 2,000 pounds, and that gives you the pounds of emission reduction. That's 122,180 pounds.
So that would be a slight reduction if it's equating that from the previous?
Yeah, because the, the, the numbers that these reductions are based on are based on what they have actually emitted in the past. And this is what they would project emissions to go down by if they can push 300 or, well, they can't do 390 long tons.
Yeah, because that, that 300 is the max. So was, I wanted to ask, was, well, I can't ask that question, because Marathon is a, with that being said, since the North Plant would have better pollution control, was there any consideration in reducing the 390? Lower?
Well, no, because the, the 390 is the amount of sulfur that they can make.
Okay, all righty. Well, that answers my question. Thank you.
You are very welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. I think, you know, as I was listening to you guys have that conversation, I think with this case specifically, it does get a little bit confusing, because we're talking about how much sulfur is going into the sulfur recovery unit. And how much, when he says producing, I think that sounds like, to me, sometimes I hear emitting, right? But it's not the same thing. And so I just want to make sure that folks are, you know, I know that you, you understand it, but I think people that maybe aren't, you know, we use those words kind of weirdly interchangeably. So it's not like they're emitting all of that sulfur that we were just kind of calculating the math for. It's what's being, you know, being gone, going through the recovery units and being recovered out and saved as like a product. Is that a good explanation of it?
Yes, you, you explain it for me. Explain it for me. Thank you.
No, no problem. No, we really appreciate the questions. We know that this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The deadline for comments submission is August the 10th, correct?
The 11th, the 11th, yep.
Okay, because I think I'll, I'll, I'll submit written comments.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, okay. And I wanted to ask, I've got a lot of emails, so could you forward me the link to submit comments?
Yes, of course.
Have to go through the clutter of looking, I mean, looking through the clutter of emails. Thank you so much.
Not a problem. We'll definitely do that. I'll do that right after the meeting tonight. All right. So good clarity. I'm, I'm just let, see if anybody has any other questions. I know this, I think what Teresa was getting at too, and as I was listening to it, I was like, I think we're confusing some terminology here. So I want to just make sure that we're clear on things, and if we have any other questions from folks before we move on here.
Yeah, we have the long tons of sulfur that's a solid or liquid product that they ship off of the facility compared to the emissions that come out of the stack.
Yeah, I'm envisioning we should have done a picture for this, Andy, because I think it would have been clear, like you have your process flow diagram, and maybe you can go back to that. So I think that that does kind of help. We're talking about all these things that have sulfur. We're talking about sulfur dioxide. We're talking about sulfur itself. We're talking about H two S sulfuric acid. We're talking about all of these things that are kind of part of this, but part of it is something that goes in and gets drawn out and is, becomes a product, something that they can sell or use. And then other part of it, the part that they can't do any of that with, or that has to escape, is the emissions. And so that's where it's a little bit different. And so maybe this is helpful to see for people. I don't know. I'm hoping that it is. I think even talking about like the thermal oxidizer, we talk about the fact that the North Plant has this emissions reduction. So that piece of equipment is specifically there to basically like, think about it like condensing and reducing what's going to come out of the stack, so that there's less coming out of the stack, which kind of just goes into that whole thing of why this North Plant is more efficient than the East Plant, so.
Yeah, I think a key difference between the two plants is that here with the, the North Plant, you get more elemental sulfur for the amount of hydrogen sulfide you get. At the East Plant, you get more hydrogen sulfide, like per long ton of sulfur you produce. The East Plant gets more hydrogen sulfide, which then has to get burned and generates emissions. At the North Plant, you get less hydrogen sulfide per long ton of sulfur produced, and therefore, the emissions going into the thermal oxidizer out the stack are lower. If that, that helps explain. And I did get a message that the, the comment period actually does close on the 10th, not the 11th.
Okay. Thanks for double checking that, Andy. I appreciate it.
Well, thanks to Laura. She, she sent a note about that, so.
All right, we'll just give you guys a couple more minutes, just to see if anybody else has any questions for us.
Yeah, these are good things to try and keep in mind in future discussions, comparing tons of stuff produced that doesn't go in the air versus tons of emissions.
All right. Okay, well, as we, all right, it looks like we might have some other raised hands here. Hold on just one second and let me. All right, Mr. Schmidt. All right, Mr. Schmidt, you have another question you want to ask? Go ahead.
Yes, I, I do. Now, with this reduction, does the quality of the air improve significantly by, by this process that they're planning on doing?
Well, the emissions would be reduced, so that would be increasing or improving the quality of the air. I don't know that it's, you know, something that you walking down the street might notice, but it's going to be definitely less emissions than what is going out now. Is that helpful?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard to, to, you know, ask these questions, and then harder, I think, for you guys to answer them, but but what I'm trying to get at is the standard that, that's set for sulfur emissions, are those within EPA guidelines, or what's the standard on this?
Yeah, do you want to talk about how we do those comparisons, Andy? And I think you might be pulling up the spread, the, the table again to get that number for Teresa, potentially, or are you showing something else here?
This is something else. This is page six of the technical fact sheet. And what we did is we did a dispersion modeling analysis, like Alec talked about, looking at the emissions that come from the two sulfur plants. And I keep, I'm looking to my left, because I have it around this other screen. So table three here, this right here is kind of the percent of the significant impact level, which isn't important for this. Here's the, okay, the current, the impacts. So this would be the concentration in the air from the plants with their current throughput limits, assuming that both plants are operating at their maximum. And then this here would be the impacts from the plant, the concentration in the air, if they put all of the sulfur production through the North Plant. So there are some reductions. The one-hour SO2, it goes from 4.3 to 3.4. These reductions aren't as big as the ton per year number makes it look.
Andy, can you make it a little bit bigger, just for our folks at Cheminy?
Yep.
If you don't mind.
Turn that to, there you go. I'm going to fall off the screen. So yeah, so one-hour SO2 currently, if they produced all the sulfur they can, 130 long tons from the East Plant and 260 from the North Plant, the one-hour SO2 would be 4.3, and that's micrograms per cubic meter. And then we modeled if they put all 390 tons through the North Plant, it would be 3.41. And for all of the ones that we modeled, you can see that they all are lower than the, the current scenario. So this is the proposed operating scenario. This is the current operating scenario. And this is on page six in the fact sheet. You can go and look at that.
And we can share that after the meeting as well, if you don't have that, Mr. Schmidt. Do you have that fact sheet that Andy's referring to?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, we can sure send it to you. That's not a problem. It's available online too, if you, you know, if you want to grab it from there, but I'll send it to you afterwards for sure. Does that help what he was talking about, or do you have a follow-up question?
Well, yes, it does. I have, I have an additional question of, is, is the amount of, bound of emission still harmful, or, or, you know, what, what's, what's the limit that I assume the EPA has set for, for this particular element? Does that make sense?
Yeah. This table here, we have this, this SIL, it's a significant impact level, which is kind of a regulatory threshold. It's not a health threshold. But that threshold, if you go above that, then you're required to get into the, the health modeling. So for the one-hour SO2, it's 4.3 is the, the concentration under the current scenario. And over here's the actual cell, and the, the regulatory threshold is 7.8. I think, do we have? I don't know if we have in the fact sheet. We did actual modeling. It's not in the fact sheet, but we can make that available as well, as we did. I think we did next modeling. I'd have to look and see what the exact modeling was, but, you know, this is a regulatory threshold, and it's less than the health threshold. So I don't know, Susan can probably tell me what the current air quality standard for SO2 is, but it's more than these numbers here. And the impact, the, the concentration coming from the facility is below this number, and this number is below the health number. So I, we do not anticipate that this change is going to cause any problem for people's health in the area. It should get better. One of the challenges is the North Plant is closer to the facility fence. And so when you run the modeling, the decrease is not as big as you might expect from the ton per year decrease. Just because it's closer to the fence, and so the impact offsite is higher.
But so, does that help? I want to just make sure I don't have any other Eagle staff that wanted to chime in on that one too, because you talked a little bit about modeling and a little mentioned Susan. I don't know. Keisha wanted to chime in, if anybody has other, like, additional things that might help Mr. Schmidt understand kind of how that evaluation goes. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I can chime in for a minute. There is a National Ambient Air Quality Standard for SO2, and that's something that's based on not source sampling or monitoring, but that's out in the community. And the Environmental Protection Agency establishes these standards for different pollutants, including sulfur dioxide, and that number is 75 parts per billion, and that's what you would measure out in the community. You need to be below that. And that standard is based on a three-year calculation. So.
So Andy, are you going back to the map with, thank you. Yep. So Susan, if you can talk a little bit about how these monitors themselves, and you know, kind of what your staff do to look at those, that the air that's in the breathing zone, when we're talking about measuring SO2. Is this, is this going to be, is this still helpful for you, Mr. Schmidt? I want to make sure we're not just telling you things you already know, but I think this might be a good perspective.
This is helpful, yes.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Susan. Sorry about that.
So those, those blue stations are where Eagle does what we call ambient air monitoring. So that's air that's available for the community to breathe. It's not coming from any particular facility. It's just basically community or regional air. And so at those blue stations, we measure a variety of things, including the sulfur dioxide, fine particulate. We also measure the nitrogen oxides. It's some of the, one of the sites there on the map, we measure volatile organic compounds, so a variety of pollutants. And we compare those measured values to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards that are established by the EPA. The kind of orange monitors are on the map there are stations that are operated by Marathon, by a contractor. And at those stations, they also measure sulfur dioxide. They measure PM10, which is a little bit bigger particulate. They measure carbon monoxide and total reduced sulfur. And every six days, they measure volatile organic compounds. And all four of their sites measure that same suite of pollutants that I just mentioned. At our sites, we, we measure a lot of things. One of the sites has probably, you know, 12, maybe or 13 different kind of parameters that are measured. But those sites do measure SO2 and PM2.5 and PM10 at one of the sites.
And this data is available. Some of it's online. I'm not sure you can, maybe you can help, help us understand.
Yep. So we actually have at our Marathon website, so Eagle kind of hosts information that you might want to know about Marathon's air quality status. And that email or that website is just Michigan.gov backslash Eagle Marathon. And on that website, we have not only information about their current permits they have, we have information about their compliance status. They have their real-time air monitoring data, so those orange stations we're looking at right now. The, the information that they have real-time is linked through that as well. Any information that Susan's group for the blue stations is linked through our website. So if you're interested in that, and you can't find it, just, you know, get ahold of one of us, so we can point you to it. The important part of that too is that although those monitors, our blue monitors, like Susan said, are not specific for a facility, they're measuring the air that people in the community are breathing, so that they're measuring stuff. You're just walking around and breathing. So we use that data to look at those National Ambient Air Quality Standards to make sure that the air in those areas remains protective. And if it doesn't, then we're looking at those non-attainment things that Andy's was talking about earlier, where he was talking about ozone and SO2. And when that happens, the state has to basically work to do everything it possibly can to get back into attainment with those standards. So Susan's group is constantly looking at those numbers to make sure that air quality in these areas all across the state is protected. But in this area in particular, because there's so many monitors and so much information available, it makes it a lot better for us to be able to do that and communicate that information out. So it's a lot, I know, and it's a lot to kind of gather in, but if you're more interested in that, anybody, not just Mr. Schmidt, if you guys have more questions on that, of course, we're happy to answer those as well. And I just wanted to, just to be aware of everybody's time. It is a little bit after seven, so I kind of want to start wrapping up and moving over to the public comment portion, but I want to make sure that Keisha and Alec, either of you had any other comments that you wanted to add on to kind of this overall discussion we're having about health and air quality in this area.
In terms of modeling, honestly, Andy kind of hit it pretty good. So let's, I don't really have any much more to explain about that, so.
Okay, perfect. Keisha, how about you?
What's already been said, and if it's helpful, comparing to some of the other numbers, which were in micrograms per meters cubed, another way to describe the sulfur dioxide national standard in micrograms per meters cubed is about 196 micrograms per meters cubed. And so that compares well with the numbers that are in the table. That number is the same as 75 parts per billion, but it's the same as. That number is the same as seventy five parts per billion, but it's the same as thinking about. Three feet versus one yard type of deal. The units are a little different.
Okay, so you they're equal, but not quite equal. Gotcha. Mr. Schmidt, did you have one more question for us? I see your hand still up, so I want to make sure that I don't.
Okay, yes, can you put the links into the chat so I can just click on them?
Yes, I can do that. Yes, I can do that.
Okay, that's that's it. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Yeah, no problem. All right. So I think what we want to do now is just I'm just double checking to make sure we didn't have any other questions really quick. And then I think what we want to do is if my panelists want to go ahead and turn your cameras off. And then, Andy, I'm going to just share over you. So just hold on for one second here, and I'm going to just share over you a minute. And then I know I'll have Mary Ann, if she wants to turn her camera on. We can move over to the public hearing portion of the night. So thanks to my panelists for answering all the questions. I appreciate you guys continuing to ask those questions and kind of holding our feet to the fire a little bit on explaining things. That's helpful for us. We haven't done like an in person question and answer for a while. So like since before the pandemic, so this has been really helpful. So folks at company, you guys are great. I hope you stick around for the comment period. And then if you have comments, I think Jim, what I'm going to do is I'm going to. Got a person, so. So just to.
So Jennifer, it may be just me, but I have lost you for the most part.
Yeah, Jennifer, this is us at company. I think you're frozen.
Yeah, she's. Oh, no, I'm frozen. Am I okay now? It just gave me like your internet is unstable, but just for a second, it should be good now, I think.
You're better now.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, guys. I was telling folks before we started the meeting that a tree fell on our. Pole that has our internet this morning, and I was kind of panicking, so I hope everything goes great. All I have to do is get through the hearing statement for you and then. We can we can moderate those comments in in just a second. So hopefully, that's okay. So Andy, you can hear me still. Well, Mary Ann, give me a thumbs up if you got me here. All right, perfect. Okay, so reminder, the comments. Portion of the evening is we listen to you, but we don't answer your questions and we don't respond back to you. So I know that that can sometimes be disconcerting for folks that. Listening decision on the project for Mary Ann. So. First, I have to just start off by kind of reading. A specific statement to everybody. And then, like I said, Jim, I'm going to go to company in case you have folks with questions there. People that are listening online, if you would like to make a comment, again, we're going to use that raise hand function. Pound two on your phone if you are calling in. Or if you really want to, you can also type your comment into the chat, and then we can make that part of the permanent record as well. All right. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I'm with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy or Eagle. I will be the hearing officer tonight. We have Mary Ann Dolehanti, Air Quality Division Director, the decision maker for this permit application, listening into your comments this evening. She will be considering all comments prior to making her decision. This hearing is for a proposed permit to install for the Marathon Petroleum Refinery located located at twenty two sixty South Ford Street in Detroit. In this proposed permit, Marathon is requesting changes to help optimize the sulfur production at the two existing sulfur recovery units at the facility. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is part fifty five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can make the requested changes, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed changes an opportunity to provide information the department may use in deciding. Whether to approve the permit to install, or if there are other additional issues to consider. Please note, the proposed permit to install is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department. Including whether the permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you. Related.
All right, hold on, Jennifer. Wait till she gets back. I'll have her back up to the point she was reading at for.
Can you hear me? I'm gonna turn my camera. I'm just gonna turn my camera off for a second.
Yep. And if you go back to the please recognize that the department can only use the information and start from there.
Yep, that sounds good. That's pretty much where I still was. So that'll be perfect. All right. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. But please understand, I'm not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments. Will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for the proposed permit began on June twenty second, twenty twenty two, and will end at midnight on August tenth, twenty twenty two. Additional comments or an information must may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality based comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and, if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time during the comment period by US post or email, or you may call in a comment to the public comment voicemail. You may also type the word comment into your question box and submit your comment. Real all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand, and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to three minutes, about three minutes. If you're speaking, I'll let you know when you have about thirty seconds left, and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands are raised. But please bear with us as the technology does have challenges to doing that. Thank you so much for your attention, and I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. And I apologize for my internet stuff. I do believe that my children are playing games and they were not supposed to. So again, greatly apologize for that. But I think we're good. We've got Jim and Matt on the line, so if you guys lose me, they will go ahead and take over. Jim, if you do you have anyone there at company that would like to make a comment? And if so, if you are at company and you would like to make a comment, please do state your name for the record before you begin making your comment.
Jennifer, this is Jim at Kennedy Center. No one here is prepared if they want to make comments, so.
Okay, that sounds good. They can. They have plenty of time to change their mind, and we will go over other ways that folks can make comments if. They want to do that later, so we can definitely do that. So if I have anybody on. Line that would like to make a comment, if you want to go ahead and raise your hand. Can feel free to do that, and I'll just give you a couple of minutes to gather your thoughts if you'd like to do that as well. Okay, Jim, just wanting to check in with you to make sure. You don't have anybody there, and I don't see any hands raised. So before I just end the. Hearing, I want to make sure that we give folks plenty of time to raise their hand if they would like to. Okay, Mary Ann, are you good with me ending the hearing then for now? Okay, and we'll go over other ways folks can make comments. So this certainly is not your last opportunity. I do. Do need to just quickly read a closing statement to officially close the hearing, and then we'll get into talking about some other things really quick. So thank you for participating for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on August tenth, twenty twenty two. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. This hearing is now closed, so thank you again. All right, so just a couple other things before we sign off. That I want to go over. Thanks, Mary Ann. I appreciate that. So how can you submit an official comment? So again, greatly appreciate folks listening in tonight. I know sometimes this might be the first time you're hearing some of this. Information. So we're trying to leave a little bit of extra time after the hearings for folks to be able to submit comments in other ways. So one of the ways that you can submit a comment is by sending us a letter. Via the actual mailbox, so you can send that to Cindy Smith. She's our acting permit section manager here at Eagle. And the address for that is P O Box three zero two six zero Lansing, Michigan, and it's four eight nine zero nine. And I know Teresa had asked for us to share out the. Email address to send comments to. Folks do this all the time, so it's just eagle dash A Q D dash P T I public comments at Michigan dot gov, and we'll definitely share that out with folks as well. But what folks have been finding is some one of the easiest ways to make a comment is you can just call our voicemail box verbally and make your comment. So. That voicemail address is five one seven two eight four. Zero nine zero zero. So feel free to give us a call and let us know that you're commenting on Marathon and leave us your name and and whatever comment you might have. So where can you find any other information? So a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, especially that technical fact sheet that Andy was showing a lot are available on our Michigan dot gov slash Eagle Air Public Notice. So Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. And you can find the proposed project summary, which is kind of just the high level. Piece of information about what Marathon asked us for. And some other information related to health and to environmental justice and things like that are contained in there. That technical fact sheet that really goes through. What the panelists looked at during this permit review. So that kind of gets into those nitty gritty details that we talked a bit about tonight. The proposed permit terms and conditions. So remember, when I was talking during the opening statement for the hearing portion, we talked about how how all of the things in those proposed. Permit terms and conditions are open for comments. So if you want to take a look at those. There'll also be links to the recording of this meeting on there, and you can find that stuff on our. YouTube channel too at Michigan at YouTube dash Michigan Eagles. So. Lots of ways to find information. I probably gave you way too many right here for you to jot down or whatever, but we will share this with you via email. Or if folks have questions, obviously, give us a call. I'm just going to give out Andy's name. In email and phone number, just so that because he's a contact for the permit. If you want to talk to anybody else and you don't have time to jot this information down, or you missed who it was that you needed to ask the questions to. Then you can get with Andy, and he can always redirect you as well. So that's Andy Drury, and his email address is his last name, Drury A, and it's at Michigan dot gov. So it's D S N dog. R U R Y, the letter A, and it's at Michigan, all spelled out dot gov is in government. His phone number is five one seven. Six four eight six 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 three. So. Just repeating that out loud because I know we have folks online. So again, thank you so much. I am going to pull a couple of those links and pop them in the chat. So if folks want to stay on for a minute, they can. Otherwise, if you need to head out, you can do that. So, Mr. Schmidt, if you want to hold on for just a second, I'll share those links with you in the chat here. Just. I'm having a problem multitasking tonight. So again, thanks, everybody so much for listening in and for making a comment and for participating. We really do. You know, greatly, greatly appreciate your time and effort. So thanks so much. Panelists, you can feel free to log off if you would like to. And then Matt, if you want to stop the recording, you can do that now as well.